Go ahead and. Yes, so I want to call to order the bigger meeting of the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority and it's approximately three forty. We could have roll call.
Director Abrika.
Here.
Director Combs.
At present.
Director Kremen.
Here.
Director Pine.
Here.
And Director Bert is not present.
Okay. Next item is the approval of the agenda. So if there no proposed changes, we could have a motion to approve the agenda.
I remember.
Okay. I move in second. Roll call.
Director Abrika.
Yes.
Director Combs.
Yes.
Director Kremen.
Yes.
Director Pine.
Yes.
Director Bert is not present.
Okay, our next item is the approval of several minutes. And there any requests for any modifications? Or any questions on it? On them?
Subject to no public comment, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second. And we'll have roll call.
Director Abrika.
Yes.
Director Combs.
Yes.
Director Kremen. Director Kremen.
Yes.
Director Pine.
Yes.
Director Bert is not present.
Okay, motion carried. Next item is the public comment. And so this is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board on any topic issue that is not on the agenda. And we just ask people to stay within their time limit if all possible. So do we have any requests, Miko, at this point?
I have not seen any requests to speak at this point. Does any member of the public wish to speak at this time? I see no hands raised.
So we'll move on then to our next item if you can scroll down the agenda or let's see. So we have the consent calendar and this is sort of the continuing resolution. Since we're doing still remote soon, so if there's no questions, then I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I guess I have a question. I mean, is the governor going, if I may, through the chair?
Yes.
Given the governor seems to, not seems, has lifted the state of emergency. How can we do this? Or will be lifting the state of emergency? What's our plan here? I guess is my question.
Well, I think he's doing that in February, January, February. So at that point, then that's it. We have to go back in person. You know, I know in the meantime, some places, including us recently, are doing hybrid. But that's a whole operation in doing that. So I I think we'll be live after that, I assume. But but we could consider doing hybrid if people are interested in doing that.
Chair Abrika, if I may.
Yes.
On council's advice, we have been informed that the emergency order is being lifted at the end of February. So beginning in March, we will be bound by the requirements of the Brown Act for public meetings, or as you've suggested, hybrid meetings. At this time, we are not equipped well to do hybrid meetings. We can certainly consider that, but our plan for the time being is to begin full in-person meetings effective the March meeting. The board and the community may certainly be interested in hybrid meetings, and we can consider what the requirements are for technology to facilitate those successfully moving forward.
Okay.
And if I can just add, I have made contact with each of the three cities' quirk of the board offices as well to begin the scheduling process to request chamber issues. And I have received feedback from at least one of the member agencies that they do have the capabilities to do hybrid. But we'll have to, as Margaret said, figure out how to make that consistent across all of our meeting locations.
Yeah, so that may be, you know, a future agenda item. If the council, I mean, if the board is interested in doing hybrid even in March, it does take some work ahead of time, from what I've seen, definitely. So.
I do think in March, all the board members will have to attend in person, is my understanding.
Yeah, and then for the public, I don't know if that option open also hybrid for the public or or that's it, right? Or council have any?
Yeah, once Chair Abrika, if once the emergency is lifted, then the relaxed Brown Act rules are lifted. Those only apply to the legislative body. So if there is a hybrid format, that is to allow the public and possibly staff to attend remotely. But a quorum of the board will have to be present in a physical location.
Yeah.
Single physical location at that time. Unless they, the old Brown Act rules for participating remotely will also apply, but that requires that the agenda provide notice of the remote location and allow the public to access that location.
Okay. So I think for now we're okay, but maybe at some point we do need to discuss, just to confirm, because I know that you know, there are different opinions as far as the public hybrid and staff options. So. Okay. Any other questions or comments on this? And if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent.
I'll move approval.
Okay, a second.
Roll call.
Director Abrika.
Yes.
Director Combs.
Yes.
Director Kremen.
Yes.
Director Pine.
Yes.
Director Bert is not present.
Okay, our next item. If you recall, it's an item that I think the board identified three items for this year to try to bring closure on, or not necessarily closure, although this one, I think, probably does. You know, one was on the kind of understanding more the safer project in terms of its finances and responsibilities of the JPA. The other one was also just an ongoing but initial report on the also financing, financing plan for phase two of our projects. And then the third one was this one that had been looked at by the board a few years back in terms of updating our founding document or bylaws that and included kind of the mission, the vision, and then some other areas of the various agreements that we have with the five entities. So in this case, it's separated. I think we have this one first and then and then the other one. So yeah, so Margaret, if you could give us a little update where we kind of left off with this and
Sure.
You know, we don't need to take action today, but I think fairly soon we do. It's just been sort of pending out there. Subject to sort of checking with each entity for any concerns they had. Language.
So, so thank you. This is, this is the preamble to the second part of the conversation around the members agreement, as Chair Abrika said. As you read in your packet, going back to 2014, the existing vision for the San Francisco Creek has some language that these days might be considered a little out of date. And it may not be as complete a description of the work of the JPA anymore. So not, not to abridge your authority in deciding how you want to describe this, but providing at least a straw dog to start the conversation. Some suggested language to reframe, update, if you will, the vision statement to more correctly, more, more contemporaneously align the words of the vision with the actions of the organization. This is important because it follows into what's coming up with the members agreement and making sure that these statements about the vision and mission of the organization carry through and are consistent with the purposes section of the members agreement. There has been some conversation about the degree to which, the extent to which, or the duration of which the SFC JPA should engage in particularly sea level rise, tidal flooding and shoreline activities. So that is a question that is for your discussion and consideration and your input will influence, will help us complete the process of updating the members agreement and bringing that to you for your consideration before the end of the year.
Yeah, so any comments or questions on kind of the updated you know, version of our vision statement?
So this is this is Gary. I, I'm happy we're looking at this again. I guess I'm a little concerned as this feels like it's it's not mentioning our core functionality of protecting people's lives and property, number one. That, to me, seems like it should outweigh some of these other things. I mean, it's a it makes it look like this is about habitat. The reason we're funding this, it's about people and property first. And it doesn't talk about people's lives, and I'm not in love with that.
Well, this is an opportu-, you know, well, let me just respond to that. I think the original one also didn't have that. And so you know, I think we're just trying to for one, I think, update it so that the reality of the work is that we have been engaged already in the shoreline work and they, you know. That was the original reason for us trying to update it was, you know, we're already dealing with the bay, so we might as well put it in unless we don't want to, but we're already engaged in that. The other part was, if you remember, it said, and maybe that's in the mission statement. Sometimes there's vision statements and mission statements and goals. You know, where it talked about the yeah, you know, it talked about the coordinating the emergency preparedness. And that was always a sore point because it, the JPA never had the capacity to coordinate that, but there was in the mission statement. And so we did do some work, I think, you know. We contributed to at least improving the communication and interaction within the different of the different people responsible for emergency preparedness. But that was definitely not something we were capable of doing. So yeah, so I mean, now it's open to it, you know, I think, I just felt like we just need to bring this into consistency with what we're doing and this is the first, I think Margaret put this together, but you know, it's open to edit, for sure. There's not, or anybody in the public, any comments. And but I do think that we do need to just bring closure on this soon, sooner rather than later, because.
Yeah, I agree, Chair Abrika. I'm just saying, looking at this.
Yes.
Reduce the risk of flooding. It should be about protecting, as you know, people's lives and property.
Exactly, yeah. No, I would agree with that language.
Not mentioning there. Yes.
I would agree with that.
First priority.
Some, somewhere that language needs to be in there. I definitely agree with that.
And with respect to shoreline, I think that's kind of a separate topic of scope versus you know, our core mission. So I'm open to hear what other people have to say.
Yeah. Yeah, any other comments? And I'm sure, you know, Margaret, if you, you know, I'm sure taking notes, at least. We don't have to craft it today, but at least some of the concerns or the language, et cetera, and then we can come back with something. Yeah. Any other have any comments or questions?
Cecilia Taylor has a comment.
I'm sorry?
Cecilia Taylor has a comment.
Okay, yes, whoever it is.
Good afternoon, Board Chair, Vice Chair, and Board Members and also staff of the San Francisco Creek JPA. My name is Cecilia Taylor. I'm a resident of Millau Park. I am also a proud member of the Millau Park City Council, elected by District One, which is Haven Avenue, and also the Bellhaven Neighborhood. I want to thank both the Board Chair and also Ms. Bruce for having this item on the agenda. I am in support of the work that you're doing, and also I fully support the updated mission and vision of the work that you're doing, and I am very appreciative of you. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, suggestions?
We have another comment request for Kate Kennedy.
Yes, hi there. Thank you all for letting me speak today. My name is Kate Kennedy, and I'm the Community-Based Adaptation Program Manager with Climate Resilient Communities. And we work with environmental justice communities, frontline communities in the peninsula, so East Palo Alto, North Fair Oaks, Bellhaven, all places we've been working a lot lately. And I would also like to say that the Joint Powers Authority has been an incredible partner and has been doing really incredible work in both Bellhaven and East Palo Alto, and that we're, as an organization, are very supportive of their leadership, particularly their focus on equity and the way that they're doing community engagement as part of their Safer Bay process. I think it's really rare to see an organization lead like that, and I would just like to say that I strongly support both the expanded like vision and mission and those updates that have been suggested so far, because I think that the organization that the JPA is has been, yeah, just a really incredible force in the communities and am appreciative of their role. So thank you very much.
Any other comments?
I don't see any. Oh, wait, Dave Pine.
Back to the, back to the board too, yes, sure. Just jump in.
Yeah, I, I don't want to wordsmith things, but I, I kind of like the, I like the insertion of the word shoreline somewhere. In order to, you know, pick up our safer bay work. I mean, the JPA has been, you know, dedicated to Safer Bay Project now for geez, a decade.
Yeah.
And I, and I think our, you know, somehow we need to make sure that's clear in our, in the vision or the mission statement.
So Chair Abrika, I, I heard that comment and thank members of the public. I think without Mayor Bird here, you know, I know us on, we're not trying to put county against county, but you know, we, we have some questions about, because here in Santa Clara County, we're doing tons on the shoreline side. And I know, speaking to Mayor Bird, he has questions about Mission Creek. And putting ourselves in a position to fund stuff that's not directly related to the creek, for example, valley water, working with the city of Palo Alto, we're doing tons with tidal flooding, especially at the tidal floodgates in Palo Alto. And I, I think without him, we we might end up in a place that the city might not be happy with, but I don't want to speak for them.
Yeah, well, I definitely, you know, I said it, I'll say it again. I don't think we want to wordsmith this right now. This is like an initial look at it again, where we are and give suggestions, even specific languages, language, you know, words, whatever. And then, you know, bring it back and look at it again. I do agree with Board Member Pine about leaving the word shoreline, because I think the operational part, the financial part, you know, certainly historically, I know very well that there's been an imbalance in Santa Clara County and San Mateo County. You know, but rather than having this be the place where that gets worked out, I feel like it's in the goals, it's in the specific financing plans, et cetera, because at least for us in East Palo Alto, the shoreline continues to be a concern. And, you know, if you remember, I don't know if you were on the board then, but we did have a a big debate, and it was a very important debate. I think we ended up agreeing that we should go ahead and do that, even though it wasn't in the mission statement. So here we are. We are now engaged in some way, but if we want to pull back, or we want to do modifications or whatever, I think that that's definitely a very important topic, but at least for now, I feel like I'm okay with the word shoreline being there. And, you know, adding some other language. But yeah, no, I agree. You know, we're not going to make any final decisions tonight. I think this is an opening discussion right now, and we'll see where we land, you know, but I think it's possible to.
Hey, Chair Abrika, this is Drew. And so I think for, and certainly Director Kremen can chime, chime in. I think his question is whether adding shoreline into you know, the, the vision, mission sort of commits the JPA to a certain course or engagement that he seems to have some concern about, and which he says, Mayor Bert, who isn't here, does have concern about. And so I think the question is because I don't understand that that discussion is actually agendized or something that we're planning to have. And so do we, do we put that on and have that and then revisit mission and vision? Or do we have that as part of, of the mission and vision debate? For, for efficiency sake, I don't know, but, but I, I think that like that maybe is, is the question. Is, is the plan for the JPA to, to have that, that discussion? Are we visiting? And again, to your point, obviously, to some degree, not to some degree, the JPA has made a decision about shoreline work. Because it's engaged in it and has been for, for, for a number of years. And so revisiting that would actually be something that would ask the JPA to remove itself from certain projects in which it is already involved. And, and is that what that would definitely mean? Is that what, what Mayor Bird and Director Kremen are looking for? You know, not a sort of lack of an affirmation of shoreline, but also a in the mission and vision, but a removal of the JPA from shoreline projects of which it's currently involved. So that certainly would need to be a separate debate from this vision and mission. And so I think that that, that's where we are. I just, I would, I'm comfortable either way, like, right? If we're going to have and agendize a separate discussion about that, again, it would be, you know, around the idea of the JPA removing itself from projects it's already involved in. Or do we just want to sort of, if it's seems to be the JPA's would be willing to go in a certain direction, again, around the shoreline issue, we could have the discussion as, as a part of this. Generally, I'd have to say, you know, there is the world as which we like to envision it, and there is the world that exists. And I think the world that exists now is one that, as I said, the JPA is a critical component of very important shoreline work. And so, and of which those were existed before I joined this board. And so so revisiting that would be removing or extricating the JPA from those projects. And from that work, which would, I think, put them in some jeopardy, because that's the real world, right? And so that's not something I would be willing to do, but I am willing to have the discussion. So then, then that is all clearly laid out. And again, we're not just talking pros, but, but we're talking about, you know, multimillion dollar projects and protecting life and, and property for those communities along the shore and, and, and whether we would be willing to jeopardize that.
Yeah, so I, yeah, definitely. I think understand the point you're making, which I think is, I'll try to rephrase it from my understanding, but so, you know, I started out by saying that I think when we had a little strategic planning, we definitely did identify the need for the Safer Bay, you know, for the board and the public to be more informed about that. And if you remember, we did have one session and then an update where we were just wondering what, so what, you know, what is going on with it, et cetera, et cetera. And then another topic was this particular area of the vision and the mission and cleaning up the document, updating it. So I think I think having a discussion makes sense. Like, let's just have a discussion about the whole shoreline, the Safer Bay Project, the involvement of the JPA. We can hear and we should hear directly from, I feel, you know, water, the Water District and, and the San Mateo Shoreline Project. In other words, I agree, I think, let's sort all that out. And then we can come back. I mean, we waited, we waited this long for the vision statement and missions them, you know, so I I'm not necessarily saying like, we just need to update it. On the other hand, organizations function based on what they say they're going to do or not do, right? And so I, I, I think that yeah. We need to do both things, I think, and, but where we land, if it's in the vision or the mission or the goals, that can that can wait a little bit, but we do need to have that discussion. And definitely you know, Mayor Bird to be, needs to be involved from, from Palo Alto. So so I think for our next meeting, perhaps it's when we could really do a more in-depth analysis of and people can express their positions or where we are or options, et cetera, because I just feel like we, we, we need to do that sooner rather than later. Otherwise, it starts becoming, I don't know, you know, I just, I'll just say it, it starts becoming a focus of rumors. People hear this, say that, and pretty soon it creates confusion in the public and even in us. So anyway, I'll just responding to your, I think you know, your insight into, yeah, you know, yeah, we can change this, but we need to have a full discussion. So anybody else have any thoughts? I think we might as well just you know, have a very good discussion, good debate. And, and then see where we want to go. And then we can modify this. So.
Yeah, you know, maybe there's a way to better define what projects we're talking about. So if it's in the watershed.
Yeah.
And I'm just thinking of what valley water can legally do in other counties. You know, I, and I have to check with legal, we can go there, but if we're talking north, let's say Redwood City or something north, I don't even think we have the legal ability to be able to do anything there.
But we, yeah, we definitely should involve the legal people too. I mean, you know, after all, we are a legal entity that has five jurisdictions, and so far we've been able to really work together well. But now I think it is one of those times when we do need to really consult everything, check everything. And like you say, you know, especially the counties, of course, or the Water District has certain jurisdictions, certain limitations and all of that. And because we are covering two counties, that's always made it a not only interesting, but complicated and stuff. So I mean, I think if, you know, if we do a study, I think we should do a little study session, including having sort of legal opinions. Or whatever, whatever people see, you know. Yeah. Any other comments about us maybe proceeding that way, kind of shifting, you know, this sort of opens up that discussion and then shifting to having a study session that we could have. You know, basically put all the issues on the table and have some experts, in this case, legal experts or project by explaining the different projects, et cetera, et cetera.
Chair Abrika, I would be happy to agendize that in November, a study session to complement the board meeting. I would also like to observe that we have been awarded over four million dollars from the San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority. And I think some of the reason for their award for our Safer Bay Project is their confidence in the organization's commitment to its communities. If there were a reconsideration of the agency's scope or commitment to the shoreline projects, that and, you know, I can't speak to the SFB. that and, you know, I can't speak to the SFBRA's decision-making, but it could, that funding could be, I think, reasonably called into question.
Yeah, well, rather than, no, I appreciate, I appreciate your, you know, reminding us of that, but I don't want to engage in hypotheticals of if this or that, because ultimately the JPA is a political entity, whatever it decides to do will do, right? But I think to the point of the study session, it would be good to, you know, assemble all these different pieces together. So, you know, funding commitments we have or the reason why we got him. And that's why I was mentioning even the legal that, you know, Gary mentioned that, that and it reminded me of that, yes, you know, there are all these legal questions too, and might as well just address them all. So I really feel this next one. And perhaps in preparing for that, we definitely should maybe have a joint planning group with you and the, you know, Water CEO and then the shoreline CEO. So that it isn't just us sort of saying this is what we we, in other words, the way I look at it is th- this is one of those times, it reminds me of another period of time where we really had to address some very serious issues. Complicated issues. And we stayed together. And so I think sorting them out helps us to understand what we can do together and maybe some things we cannot, you know. But but that's a good area, definitely, when you mentioned the the grants we have. So we should have a list of the grants we have or the the Water District Grants and Palo Alto Grants, you know, all these grants, there are all these little pots of money, some are bigger, but yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, as this Dave is, you know, I I, as you all know, I'm the Chair of the San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority. And, you know, it's always been the assumption, not the assumption, but the, you know, basically bedrock that the San Francisco Creek JPA was committed to Safer Bay. And otherwise, it shouldn't be submitting applications for funding.
Right.
And so if if, you know, if that's really in question, you know, we we need to, we need to put on hold these grants.
Yeah, so I I definitely would suggest, you know, perhaps for this, for this planning meeting on all the issues and the topics, I definitely think the three CEOs should collaborate on that. So that all these topics are really put on the table. With as much information, you know, for the JPA Board. Any and all issues that are floating around, we should just put them on the table. And that that will help, I think that will help us to sort out the direction that we want to go into and yeah. I think that's so I think we've heard from all board members, but it's everybody then in agreement, then let's plan a study session that would be a you know, a more robust, let's say, with with issues and information.
This is, this is your, I'm supportive of of the study session. I I do want to make sure I understand like sort of what's where this all like ends. And so, because again, study sessions are about collecting information, there is no no action item for for the board. And and I think what it will be important to understand is is whether there is going to be a need for a vote reaffirming where the board stands or where the JPA stands when it, as it relates to to shoreline work. And I think it has to be some sort of affirmation that removes the question mark that currently exists. And while we're here now, like, right, we're here now.
Yeah, right.
E- even as the GPA has been in in involved in shoreline work for for some time, even as it's submitting grant requests related to some of its shoreline work. But you you know, is the missing factor that it has not been in a vision or or mission statement? Or what is, but but I do think that, like, while I'm supportive of a study session, I will say the study session is, doesn't in and of itself resolve. And I do think that we have to for for the stakeholders, for the community and and for the staff, like, right, really sort of resolve this question. And 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 I don't, I I think that, like, the only way it ultimately is resolved is in the affirmation that comes with an actual vote. And and so ju- just wanted to make, again, totally supportive of the study session, but as I see this, the studies, this this leads to some very clear, unambiguous affirmation from the 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 board about where where it stands with regards to this work and and affirmation, which I I hope will at least resolve this issue for, I don't know, in, you know, ten years. I know it'll probably never go away completely, but at least for as long as I'm still still on it.
Yeah, no, but I would say, you know, both, I I would say both things can be on the agenda. The only reason I'm calling the study session, one is because sometimes questions come up, even right now. Well, what are the questions or the concerns? So let's just list them and study them. But I agree, I think, you know, both, so I would say we can have both of them. Study, we don't have to call a study session, but you know, but study this more to address the questions that are floating around and then give direction is to you know, affirm or change. So you know, rather than doing it in another meeting. So that's why in some ways I was suggesting that this three CEOs really plan this session, because they're the ones that ultimately are responding to their boards. And so their boards have concerns or their city councils, whatever. I just feel like they should just be put on the table directly rather than us. I mean, sometimes I have to say, you know, when we're board members, this is not our full-time job. I mean, we know that, but sometimes like, I don't know specifically what some of the concerns are, just hear them or I don't have the information. So this is an opportunity to do that, I think. Any and all board members that have concerns should put them on the table and their respective staffs should provide some information to the JPA. And then then I think I'll be better prepared to, you know, take a vote on what what is our you know, current and future vision or mission, whatever. So we could, we could do both, I would say. We could do both. And, yeah. Any other comments on this topic? I think I think we've probably done enough for now. So.
Did you want to move on to the mission statement or just move ahead with this?
I'd rather. I I think we just put this on hold because that that discussion will cover both, you know, additional information and then ultimately then come back to this.
Yes.
Yeah.
In in addition, the second amended and restated Members Agreement, which is our next agenda item, is also hitched to that same conversation.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, so that yeah, they're, these are all interrelated. And, you know, I think we had in some ways separated them for some clarity, but they're interrelated. So I think I think that discussion and direction is what will then move these other things.
Okay, so so this action item, six B, we can also move forward to the study session portion of the next board meeting. There will be that lingering question about the scope of our purposes, which your conversation will inform, and we can move ahead to the next action item.
Yeah, so just on that, just going back on that, I I would put it more, yeah, it's like having the opportunity to hear from all three entities, you know, the shoreline, the Water District and the JPA and its respective cities. Then I, that that will prepare, so this will prepare me to then give direction. So.
Very good.
And others too. Okay, so. So now we have a maybe more mundane topic, but still an action item here.
So a- as you read in your packet, we have the opportunity to enter into a contract to fulfill the supplementary environmental impact report for the top of bank work associated with the Reach Two project. As as you've probably heard, there are structures on both sides of the the channel downstream from the Newell Bridge. On the east Palo Alto side, there is a little bit of sacked concrete, and it's mostly a concrete gravity wall that protects the top of bank. On the Palo Alto side, sort of behind the back fences of a long line of residential homes, there's a varying height, either stacked sackcrete or concrete brick, like what's called a CMU wall. That had been considered the top of bank when our hydraulics for the upper part of Reach Two had been evaluated. Valley Water has gone back and done some more detailed surveys of those top of bank structures on both sides of the creek to ascertain their condition. They're at the end of their useful life, they cannot easily be repaired and be certified as structurally sound, so they need to be replaced. Replacing them is within the scope of the original EIR. The construction associated with that replacement should be scoped inside a supplementary EIR. We had a request for proposal issued, we had one responsive bidder. The EMC Planning Group was interviewed by a group of representatives from East Palo Alto, Palo Alto and Valley Water and ourselves. And we're found to be responsive, have the right expertise and experience. And we would like to enter into negotiations with them for a contract and bring that contract back to you for affirmation in November. So we are asking for a direction to staff to go negotiate said contract.
Okay, any questions on the board on on this ass?
Are you looking for a motion or just direction?
Um, you know what, I would appreciate a motion, just so we have it all buckled down.
I'll make the motion then, subject to public comment.
All right, I'll second, and let's see if there are any requests from the public. To speak.
I don't have any requests to speak right now. Does anyone from the public have a comment on Agenda Item Sixty?
So if there's no
No request to speak.
No request. So then it's been moved and seconded, we'll take roll call then.
Director Abrika?
Yes.
Director Combs?
Yes.
Director Kremen?
Yes.
Director Pine?
Yes.
Director Burt is not present.
Okay.
You gentlemen?
All right, moving on to a quick summary of the Executive Director's Report. Trusting you have all read that in your packet, but I will skim through really quickly. The top of bank, we just discussed. Once that is in place, once the contract is in place with the EMC Group, we will begin the supplementary EIR. For the CAP 205 project, we have been working closely with the Army Corps of Engineers. We are progressing through that conversation or through that work with them. The next item, channel widening sites, and the next meeting, the next item, meeting with project neighbors are all closely linked. We have, as you know, been in dialogue with some of the Palo Alto project neighbors who would like us to consider a different approach than the present engineering, preferred engineering solution. Valley Water has had a great support from the Mark Thomas and Associates Engineering Firm. And through them, we have looked at a variety of engineering solutions for the bank treatments on in the project and especially sites three, four of the channel widening sites. What we were thinking of as the the potential best engineering solution may not be the best, given soil types and seismic safety considerations. So there is an ongoing conversation with the Army Corps of Engineers, Valley Water and and ourselves, about what are the possible best treatment options? Complicating that is what may work best from an engineering solution, given soil types, seismic considerations and our our priorities for durability, may not be the easiest to permit for, from a regulatory agency standpoint. It's not a foregone conclusion, we're not ruling out any of those options. But it's a very interesting set of trade-offs, pros and cons, and balancing opportunities and constraints. So we are very seriously considering a a shift from or evaluating the opportunity to do widening on both sides of the channel through part of the channel widening sites. We will provide more information on that as the evaluation proceeds. But it is a it it is, we we are looking at something that that may reduce costs, although it may slow our planning process and design process down a little bit. So again, in November, there'll be more information. We successfully concluded the annual maintenance walk. And the the issues that needed to be resolved are either done or on their way of to to being done. And in your packet, you saw an update on current project costs and current project funding. And the the overall, and this is like high level broad brush, the overall delta is on the order of thirteen to fifteen million. So we are optimistic that that we can either close that gap a little bit or hopefully it won't grow, but you know, these days that we we cannot completely assure you of that fact. But we are increasingly confident of the work with the Army Corps of Engineers coming to fruition. We are confident of the HMGP grants as well as the DWR grant. So feeling pretty optimistic about our funding scenarios. For Reach Three, next month, you will also have a brief update, although given the potential study session and fully loaded agenda, we may push this to December. But we will bring to the board an update on Woodard and Curran's cost benefit analysis for the Upper Watershed Detention Facilities. In Safer Bay World, the response to all comments has been, have been received. We are preparing and very soon to post our responses to comments on the notice of preparation. That's been a rather extensive effort, and we are very appreciative of all of the great comments that were received on the notice of preparation. We have had noticed that we have been awarded by the SFBRA an additional three point nine eight million for our Safer Bay project. And they will be taking that to their board for a confirmation vote in March. And last but not least, please provide comments on the comprehensive plan update by Friday, October twenty eighth, that would be tomorrow. And I think that's it.
Chair Abrika? Any questions or comments on any of the topics that were presented? Hearing none? Any requests on the public on anything that was presented?
Yes, I have a question. This is Jeffrey Shore speaking.
Yes.
Hi, Chair Abrika, members of the board. I noticed on page seven of the Executive Director's Report, there's a reference to the culmination and favorable outcome of the Joshua lawsuit. Is the JPA entitled to an award of costs and or attorney's fees in as much as the outcome is positive for the JPA?
Chair Abrika, would you like me to answer that question?
Please, yeah.
Yeah, so there there is no meaningful award of attorney's fees that the JPA is entitled to.
And no court costs either? Thank you.
And just, Tricia, just for explanation, it's because it's built into these EIR challenges, right? That we can't, we can't recover those costs, right? We're, we're prohibited from being able to do that.
Correct, and, and to the extent there is some small amount of cost, it's, it's, it's that we could recover, it's so small, it's just not worth the time to do it.
Or, or the cost of our attorney's fees, again, that, those, those aren't de minimis, right?
Right, exactly, yes.
But, but we can't, we, we are prohibited from, from doing that, the law doesn't allow, allow us to seek that.
That is correct.
And Chair Abrika, if I may chime in, our attorney's costs have been in, in the realm of about $90,000. And I understand from council that the, the filing fees to which we might be entitled compensation or on the, on the order of $50 to $75, so it really is not worth pursuing.
Okay, any other questions or comments on any of the items that were presented? Hearing none, then we are at board member comments and announcements. Well, I'll start with one, but then I'll turn it over to Margaret, so I do definitely know, we, we all know that our staff is very hardworking, very dedicated and Miko is definitely one of them, who's been around for a long time. And I know that in addition to her work, she's been working on other things, but Margaret, you want to tell us what it is and want to?
Oh, I'm delighted, thank you, thank you, Chair Abrika. So this afternoon, it is an honor and a pleasure to recognize Miko's accomplishments. In addition to being an exemplary clerk of the board and our administration and operations manager, Miko has also just completed all the requirements for her Bachelor of Science in Management. And in addition to that, she has also completed the technical training from the, it's the technical training for clerks from the City Clerks Association of California. And she has completed the UC Riverside Extension requirements for professional municipal clerk's cert- certificate. So in addition to a not insignificant workload, Miko has undertaken both personal and professional development that is truly exceptional and exemplary. And I just want to thank and recognize Miko for what a great example she sits, sets for her fantastic professional contributions and for being the stellar colleague that she is. And thank and recognize her for her commitment and congratulate her on her accomplishment.
Yeah, well, definitely, definitely congratulations on all those things that were mentioned. And so you got a BA or a Masters in Management, what?
Bachelor of Science.
Bachelor of Science, yeah, okay. From where, where was that, was your school?
The Bachelor of Science was completed through University of Phoenix.
Ah, okay, all right, great. All right, so anybody else want to make a comment or ask a question, but?
Congratulations, yay!
Good work.
Yeah.
Definitely congratulations.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, thank you.
These are the, the, the working students, you know, people assume you're working and that's all, but it's always great to see that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, Margaret, I, I appreciate the acknowledgement, that was a surprise, so thank you.
I, I just haven't figured out how to do fireworks on Zoom yet, but working on that.
Yeah, all right, that's a promise there for next. Any other announcements? From any board member? Well, I have a, I have a short one and that is we haven't always been consistent, but in East Palo Alto, we've done a couple of citywide cleanups throughout the years. And so they don't always coincide with some of the other ones that happen. One of the ones that I've always promoted is doing something in the fall to definitely address the issue of trash going into the creek and then going into the bay when it rains. Now, it hasn't rained for a while, but we decided to go ahead and do one, so you know, I worked with our Vice Mayor Lisa Gossett to kind of mobilize the community. So we have this Saturday from nine to 12, we are, we have about eight committed, maybe up to 10 groups in different neighborhoods. So about 10 neighborhoods in the city where we'll be collecting trash and passing out flyers, et cetera, to, you know, just keep reminding people not to. Yeah, just, you know, redo trash because it all ends up going to the, to the bay. And so next year, perhaps we can coordinate it with some of the other ones. I know there's a coastal cleanup in September, et cetera, but, and then there's Earth Day. The reason we particularly did this one is we really want to institutionalize it more and make sure that there's a lot of volunteers from the neighborhood themselves, because I know we get volunteers from all over, which is always great to see, but you know, we, we, anyway, so that's just an announcement. If you know anyone who wants to volunteer, you can go to our website and direct them there. They can go help one of their friends or whatever. Any other announcements or comments from board members?
So we do have one, one comment from our project, Senior Project Manager Tess Beiler.
Yes.
A correction, a corrected statement to be made that the SFBRA grant for Safer Project on October 14th, the Safer, Safer Bay was recommended for funding, but it will not be voted on by the governing board until March 2023.
Okay, all right, well, thank you for that clarification. Okay, well, if there's no other comments or questions from more members, then we'll stand adjourned and we'll reconvene before Thanksgiving, so for now, no, no holidays, I think, well, veterans holidays, okay?
Yes.
All right, okay, good, bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye, thank you.